Pastor Todd Starnes, the First Assembly of God, led by Pledge of Legions and Texas Pledge by Councilmember White. Will Pastor Todd Starnes come forward? Do we have Pastor Todd? Going once? Going twice? Okay, so I'm gonna ask this question. Does somebody want to do the invocation before I voluntold somebody? Come on, brother. You can start off in prayer. Say your name for the record, please.
Denzel Caldwell.
Thank you.
Father, thank you for allowing us to gather once again. We ask that you give us wisdom and insight not only to affect change, but positive change. Father, give us peace and unity and understanding amongst ourselves, that there be no bickering or disagreements beyond reason. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Please join me in the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have proclamation?
Yes.
So we're gonna be presenting a proclamation. We're gonna be presenting two?
Permian Basin Adult Literacy Center for National Literacy Month.
You wanna say something a little bit about it before we read the proclamation? Come.
Well, I wanna thank Mayor John Juan and the City of Odessa for offering us the opportunity to promote National Literacy Month, which is this month in September. As you know, literacy affects all aspects of an individual's life and the community that they live in. The literacy crisis in the U.S. is real, and we need to start giving it the attention that it needs. In Texas alone, or in Texas, we have the fourth lowest literacy rate of the United States. And in Odessa, 24% of county adults lack a high school diploma. 24%, that's pretty high. And 40% of adults speak a language other than English, which does affect literacy rates. So keep that in mind. So I want to encourage all community members, City Council, and the mayor to get involved with their literacy organizations in Odessa and in the Permian Basin by volunteering or giving a monetary donation, so that we can all together improve literacy rates, not only in Texas, but in the United States. Thank you so much.
So the City of Odessa proclamation, whereas limited literacy is a significant hand gap for adults, and it will become progressively disabling in our increasingly technological and digital world. And whereas more than 30% of the Permian Basin adult experience literacy issues impacts reality on the lives and families, their ability to work predictably, from their participation as citizens and residents. Whereas moreover, the inability to speak and write English is a significant barrier to the assimilation of adults born other countries and their children, and prevents them from seeking to establish a sense of community. So according to the 2020 U.S. Census Bureau data, 24% of Ector County adults do not have a high school diploma. 45.7% speak a language other than English. In addition, Texas has fourth lowest literacy rates in the United States. These are staggering literacy stats. And whereas the Permian Basin Adult Literacy Center works with partners, business, and invites community residents, media, and join the high line of economic and social importance of literacy. Now therefore, I have been held by the virtue authority vested in me as this mayor of this great community of City of Odessa, Texas, to hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Literacy Month. So throughout the City of Odessa, we urge citizens to learn more and become involved in the literacy of our community. Congratulations, and thank you for presenting. Okay, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Any citizen wishing to address the City Council non-agenda items can do so by coming forward and stating your name for the record. You can do that by coming forward now. Also want to remind, any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. Council, have you overlooked the consent agenda as it is presented? Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Swannar. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We're gonna move on to item... Item five, item one. Consider ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget. Ms. Munson?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This item is ratifying the property tax revenue increase that is reflected in the 22-23 annual budget. Adoption of the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the tax increase, not a tax rate increase, but a tax revenue increase reflected in the budget as per Section 102.007 of the Local Government Code. There will be a slight increase in the tax rate. It is the no new revenue tax rate, and it is lower than the voter approval tax rate of .521008. The final vote on the tax rate will happen, we will vote first tonight, and then we will vote secondly on September 20th, as we have a seven-day requirement. The annual budget for 2023 will raise more property taxes than last year's budget by $1,949,671, or 4.1%. The property tax raised from new property that joined the roll this year, that added, that was $1,186,426. So 61% of the increase is due to new property. The other is due to increased values that were placed on the properties that were in existence at last year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? Direction? Interrogation? Like, no!
I got too many tonight, don't interrogate.
It's not that bad.
Okay. So I don't need to vote yes?
Council, any further discussion of now, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Willis. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All those, again, indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero.
Thank you, Council.
We're gonna move on...
Thank you.
...to public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider approval request by 87th Street Partners owner to rezone a multifamily residence to retail, 1.34 acre tract, and 1.16 acre tract suited for Section 38, 39, Block 42, Township 1. Mr. Rinn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out 12 notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did receive six written protests, and we did receive zero written approvals. The property involved in the request is located northwest of the intersection of Evans Boulevard and East 87th Street. The site is currently zoned multifamily 2. It is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of single-family residential development to the north and the east. There's vacant land to the west and retail development to the south of this site. The applicant and property owner in this case is 87th Street Partners. And the purpose of the request would accommodate businesses that would provide services and goods to the residents of North Odessa area. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the city's comprehensive master plan, we would evaluate the zoning amendment as follows. The request is not out of line with the city's comprehensive master plan. The property is located at the intersection of a major arterial, which is Evans Boulevard, and this would allow retail zoning and the associated less intense uses. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or the surrounding properties. However, the adjacent property owners, and it's the owners that are up in this cul-de-sac you can see in this area, do have concerns related to the land uses and the development standards that might be associated with those uses. And the proposed zoning district will be abutting this single-family development and multifamily development to the west. And this would be a good buffer between the uses to the south and the residential uses to the north. The Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously approve a request for planned development retail. And what this does, it allows the city and the developer to come to agreement on some development standards that would minimize any impact to the residential development to the north. And a gentleman named Kobe... Oh, I'm losing...
Fester?
Foster.
Morris, I'm sorry. I was about to draw a blank on his name. Kobe Morris was the spokesman, and we discussed the development standards that would include a 25-foot building set back on the front and rear, and a 25-foot building set back on adjacent to any property that's adjacent to a single-family residential development, maximum building height of one story, maximum lot coverage of 50%. There would be, land uses on this property would be amended, and that has been attached to the council packet. And what that does is remove many of the uses that could be considered detrimental to any type of residential development, such as a tavern or a lounge or things like that. Those have been taken out. It also provides for a screening fence to be built adjacent to any single-family residential development. And any of the signs and landscaping would meet city standards that's currently contained in the zoning ordinance. And also adoption of a site plan that would be provided prior to development of the property. And with Mr. Morris and members of 87th Street in present, this eased the concerns tremendously of the residents of the cul-de-sac. And as far as objection, it lowered that tremendously with these development standards in place. They were more concerned about not being able to have any type of buffering or fencing or anything like that. And with us being able to do this through a PD, that sort of alleviated what they had. But by law, we had to go ahead and say that they did have the concerns, because they did send them in.
Yeah, sure.
And I'll be happy to answer any... The P&amp;Z did recommend adoption of the planned development retail with adoption of these conditions, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval of planned development retail. Be happy to answer any questions.
Randy, what's the... And I know right now it's still preliminary, but what is the material gonna be consist of, of the fence? And what was the height on that, again?
The fence will be between seven and eight feet in height. You know, it'll allow for firefighter access if need be. And it'll be like columns would be decorative brick masonry, and the panels in between would be like either a stockade or a metal-to-look decorative metal-type fencing that's less maintenance and less of a visual impact on the neighborhood to the north.
So we, you know, our fire department will be able to have access?
Yes, sir. It will be.
That was my safety concern.
Yes, sir.
Because I know they were asking for quite a... Somebody had asked for quite a bit of a 12-foot.
Yeah, that's... No, that exceeds ordinance requirements, so we wouldn't be able to do that height. So, yeah, we would do the firefighter accessibility.
I'm glad you found a solution for this.
Yeah, that's good.
Council, any questions?
Randy, you did say most of the people on these protests were in that meeting in...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea what type of retail this could be?
It'll be just light-use retail. It's kind of like a neighborhood services-type deal. We're looking at stuff like cleaners, maybe daycare, things like that.
This is right down from that Beedenbow?
Just right to the north of that. Yes, ma'am. The Beedenbow office is that lot right here, and then we're locking up these into here. And these open spaces here would be access to multifamily development here coming off of Evans.
Okay.
Any further discussion? This is an open hearing. Anyone wishing to address item two can do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record. You can do that by coming forward now. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close the open hearing. And any further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Motta. Do I have a second? And I have a second by Councilmember Sprouse. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item three. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by Beedenbow Homes, owner of annexation, original zoning, special dwelling district SPD on 206.277 acres, special dwelling district surface drainage, on 61.543 acres, special dwelling reservation, on 4.02 acres, approximately 280.63 acre tract, on Section 27, 28. Mr. Rinn?
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is located at the intersection of Northeast Loop 338 and U.S. Highway 385. The applicant and property owner is Beedenbow Homes. This tract is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of commercial residential development to the south and west, and there's vacant land north and east of this site. The purpose of the annexation and original zoning request would incorporate a total of 280 acres into the City of Odessa, and this would be used for residential development, and it would accommodate approximately 1,079 lots in this area. There would also include surface drainage and a drill site. The current area of the city limits is approximately 52 square miles. Total area of this request is approximately 280 acres, and this does put the area of the request within the annexation statutes that allows a maximum annual annexation of 10% of the city's incorporated area. And that maximum can be carried over to a total of 30% maximum, so basically three years annexation could carry over. But we are well within the limits of the annexation limits on this. The City of Odessa's comprehensive plan states that the city should strive for orderly city boundaries and utility service area, and annexing properties that are adjacent to the city limit lines would be considered logical boundary extensions of the city limits. Commission approval of this annexation request does include a service plan for the proposed annexation area, and this was prepared by city staff in accordance with state law, and that has been attached with the petition for annexation. The service plan was required to be adopted by the commission and accompany this request, and that has also been done. The original zoning of special dwelling district on approximately 200 acres, and special dwelling district surface drainage on 61 acres, and special dwelling district drill reservation on four acres are also being requested for this site. These requests are compatible with adjacent land uses, and it is compatible with the City of Odessa's comprehensive master plan land use. There is also proposed neighborhood park and three-pocket parks for this development, and funding for the proposed parks and activity areas would be facilitated through a proposed public improvement district, and that would be associated with this particular development. Site plan approval will also be required to establish building and development standards prior to development of this property. And at the September 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission did vote unanimously to approve the annexation and the original zoning requests. And planning staff does endorse the annexation request, and the staff does recommend approval of the original zoning requests. And be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Going once, going twice? Councilwoman Sprouse? No, no, you cannot make a motion. You cannot make a motion.
Not yet.
We are in official meeting. You would have to rescind it if you made it. Let me stop you right there. The chair does not recognize Councilwoman Sprouse. Okay, one meeting at a time. Let me get back on track. Item three, so this is an open hearing. It's an open public hearing. Anybody wanting to come forward and speak on item three as presented can do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record. You can do that by doing it now. Seeing that no one's gonna come forward, I will close the open hearing and entertain a motion on item three for approval. Councilwoman, Councilmember Swannar, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Sprouse. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. We're gonna move on to ordinances. Consider to modify the list of signalized intersections prohibited in parking zones and parking meter zones. First approval, Mr. Felman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item has three components, all traffic-related. The first part is, there's a section in the ordinance that deals with the list of signalized traffic, signal intersections. And I need to add four that are currently under construction or soon will be. Dawn and 52nd, Fodgerine P-Bar, Fodgerine Tracer Monis, Goldrill and Yukon. Excuse me. The next part of the agenda item has to deal with the section of the ordinance that deals with prohibitive parking zones. What I want to do is I want to add the newly completed and opened Estancia Boulevard from, on both sides, from 56 down to 191. It's built as a three-lane roadway, so there's no room for on-street parking. And the last section of this ordinance is the section that deals with parking meters. There's a new business coming downtown at the corner of Texas and Fourth. They've requested that the parking meters along that section of Fourth be removed. And so what I'm doing is asking for both sides of Fourth Street between Texas and Jackson for parking meters to be removed. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
Texas and Fourth?
It's a north, just northeast of the courthouse.
Okay.
Yeah.
And about how many meters?
Uh, five. Yeah.
It will have a severe budget impact.
So...
Council, do we have any discussion on the five meters? I didn't even know we still have meters.
Yes, we do.
Your last messages. Any discussion on this item? Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Wait, wait, Stuart. I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember White. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I lost my speech. I lost my speech here. Okay, item five, consider declaring the unopposed candidates to be elected to the office of councilmembers District 3 and 4. City Secretary Gmolda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The filing deadline has passed, which was August 22nd. We had two districts that had unopposed candidates, which was District 3 and District 4. You have received the certification of unopposed candidates certified, and the ordinance would declare the elected District 3 and 4 as elected. They would not go into office until after the November 8th elections.
But they'd still be on the ballot?
They will still be on the ballot, but it'll be listed as uncontested, declared elected.
So they at least have that one vote. That's great about America, you can vote for yourself. Council, any discussion? Entertain a motion for approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swannar, second by Councilmember White. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Taco's on y'all. We're gonna move on to item six. Consider approval for water rate change. First approval, Ms. Munson. Now, you're in for the grind.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance, this first reading of the ordinance is to approve a rate change for water rates to assist with continued rise in costs of equipment, debt service, maintenance, repairs, and replacements of deteriorating lines of the water sewer department. A change to water rate is being proposed. All accounts, including residential, commercial, and industrial, will receive an across-the-board 6% increase. If approved, the proposed rate changes will be effective October 1st, 2022, and will be reflected on the November 2022 bills. The 6% consists of 2.5% regular increase that the council has implemented over the last, I think, three years. And then we added 3.5% to help cover the new debt issuance, which was to cover the water treatment plant rehab that we are currently undergoing. For a 5,000 gallon a month user, this is a $2.18 increase. We'll answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Sprouse, for approving the new water rate change. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to item seven. Consider approval of sewer rate change. Ms. Munson?
This rate change is the same as the water rate change. It's, again, our increased cost, equipment, debt service, maintenance, repairs, and replacements of sewer lines. And this, again, is a 6% based on the same proposal that we had for the water rate. And this, for a 5,000 gallon a month user, this is a $1.32 increase. And I didn't mention with the water rate, but these rates, we do have discounted rates for our senior and disabled citizens.
65?
Yes, and disabled, so... And I'll answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
And that's 6.5 or 6%?
6%.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion for item seven for approval?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Motta, second by Councilmember Willis. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We want to item eight. Consider approval of solid waste rate change. Ms. Munson?
Again, with this solid waste rate proposal, we have been doing an incremental amount for the last couple of years. We've seen an increase in cost of equipment. I think our new solid waste trucks are costing us about 30% more than usual. Our tipping fees at the landfill also took a 6% increase. And as you all know, we had increased fuel costs during this fiscal year. So this rate increase of 3.5% for a single family, this would be a 75 cent a month increase to their bill. And I'll answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Any discussion? Entertain a motion for approval on item eight?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swannar, second by Councilmember White. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item nine. Consider levying the tax for the year 2022, tax year fiscal year 2022-23. Ms. Munson?
This ordinance does have to do with actually setting the tax rate. So the council has determined that they want to levy the tax rate for the 2022 tax year, fiscal year 2022. year, fiscal year 22, '23, at the no new revenue rate of .483791. The proposed rate is, is lower than the no new revenue rate, which is, I mean, the voter approval rate, which is at .52, I lost my note. We had it earlier. Anyway, it's lower by like, almost four cents. The .521008. So this, the current tax rate that we're in this year is at .477115. This tax rate allows for the continuation of all of our exemptions that we have had in the past, including the homestead exemption, senior citizen, disabled persons, and so forth. The 22 taxable value of Odessa is $10,563,563,344,315. This is a 3.28 increase as compared to the total taxable value for '21. An average home, according to the Etra County Appraisal District, for this year is $173,428. This is versus $165,330 in the prior year. So I will answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any discussion? Any questions? I'd like to see where that valuation is, it's not at my house. No discussion? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sprawls, second by Councilmember White. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And we will have the second vote on this ordinance at our work session next Tuesday. We have a seven-day turn on that.
Thank you. We're going to go to resolutions. Item 10, consider approval of the Odessa Development Corporation general development plan and five economic development contractor agreements for fiscal year 2022, '23. David Luttein, yes, sir, how you doing, sir?
I'm just doing great. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. And Counselman Sprawls, I really liked that shirt. The, uh...
When we're going to address the council, let's address the council as a whole. We all have, we all, we all have to cheer for the little brother. I really debated wearing that Texas shirt today.
Mayor, your jacket looks really nice.
It does, it does. It's OC blue. For the record, I want to sit there and say that, congratulations to Texas, Texas Tech, for winning their, the only Texas team to win, but also realize they had to go over overtime for Houston. Just put that in the minutes, thank you.
And that's my school.
Houston is my school.
Houston, well, congratulations. You, you really pressed on. Yeah, you put up a good fight. Sorry.
I'm not sure.
Little, little, little levity here.
Levity's all right.
Go for it.
I'm here to, on behalf of the Odessa Development Corporation, to present our general development plan. Although the plan is very similar to previous years, there are a few things that I would like to point out. There was an item added to the strategic planning goals, a messaging program for oil and gas. We are not going to pursue the Permian Fuels America, but we may lend that campaign to a joint effort between the Midland and Odessa Chambers and PSP to try to provide some positive message, messaging for oil and gas, counteract some disinformation, talk about how, how clean that the oil and gas energy industry is in our community. So that's, that's something that we added. There are multi-year economic development agreements that are updated. And one of the things that I'd like to point out, there are five of those for the, and of course, one for the city, the, the Odessa Chamber Economic Development Department, Black Chamber, UTPB, a Small Business Development Center, and Motran. One of the things that we are going to ensure this year is that there's financial reporting provided by all in order to assure, ensure that the money is spent as, as it's intended. You'll notice, and we talked about this at your general, at your work session, the housing $5 million reserve has been removed because the program just wasn't working, and we haven't found a substitute for it yet. And in answer to some of the questions, you know, I, I finally figured out what, why I was not apprised or not informed with regard to Rhodes and its potential request for workforce housing grant, it never came to the ODC board. It went to compliance in a, really a discussion format. There's never been a formal proposal, and so that's the reason that I was a little vague on it. And, and I would like to comment that that company, Rhodes USA, at this time, has indicated, we had conversation very recently through our chamber contractor, that they're very busy in their Lubbock operation, and they're rethinking the Odessa situation, so not sure the, so the business incentive where the contract has never been executed is on hold, and so is the, any proposal that may be coming with regard to housing. So just wanted to follow up on that. We, we did make changes to the tiered areas for facade and infrastructure. We think that that program has worked very well. But, but almost all of that has happened in the very center of the downtown area, and in order to expand that to the outer areas, we've, we're suggesting that we have a Tier One and Tier Two only, which are the highest paying grants, if you will, in order to stimulate those areas as well, and we think it makes a lot of sense to do that. I'd also like to comment on the fact that we have, at this time, there was $11.5 million several years ago that was earmarked for Tech Dot projects in order to put some seed money in to accelerate those projects so that they would be completed sooner. We spent $2.5 million out of that. We still, we still have a good list there, an additional $9 million, but there's, the original commitment in total was $15 million. So there's $3.5 million that's never been identified. We plan to look at that, see if it makes some sense. Are there other projects in our community that it would help to provide some seed money in order to accelerate those projects? Nothing's been identified at this point. The other, the only other item that, that I would say, the Hispanic Chamber is, is not a contractor this year. There was no proposal made. This Hispanic Chamber is maybe in reorganization, not sure about that at this point, but we've had no contact from them. So I would entertain any questions, if you have any? But we'd, the ODC would like to, like your approval of this general development plan.
Counsel, any question? Counsel, any questions? David, real quick on that, going from Permian Basin Fuels America, going to the PSP and in conjunction with Midland Chamber. What's that, a dollar amount? And, and it's for marketing, or what, what are we doing?
Well, there is no dollar amount that's been identified. It's really just, it's part of the list of strategic planning goals. It's the last item on that list. We've not identified any monies. There are marketing monies that we have in our budget of $600,000, but hopefully PSP will, you know, pick up a portion of that, and the Midland, Midland Odessa Chambers pick up some of that. We, we have not identified any funds, and have not been, no, no funds have been requested this time.
It's going to be for '23?
Yes, yes. And this is a follow-up to when we, the Washington fly-in that we did.
Congressman Fluger and others indicated we need some help, we need some ammunition to,
in order to support the oil and gas industry with our fellow legislators.
Maybe direct some of that to Austin, too.
Yes, absolutely.
I do have a question, whenever you're finished.
You have a question on this item?
No, I just, out of, just curiosity more than anything, for the Permian Fuels America, there was such a big push the last couple of years, and you said y'all aren't going?
Yeah, well, well, and you know, if you remember what we were trying to do, the first thing we were trying to do was ensure that the labor force that we had stayed here. You know, there's a big part of that campaign that was offering assistance, you know, directing people to assistance, telling them it's going to be okay, the oil business always comes back and all that. So that was a big part of that. The other part of it was doing some messaging to, particularly in the state, at the federal and state level, to advise the administration, particularly in some legislators. And then, but we're, we're not going to do that if we, if that happens, it's going to be a joint, joint effort on behalf of the Permian Basin with Midland as our partner.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Willis. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 11, consider support for Tech Dot to seek rail funding in this upcoming Texas legislation, legislative session. Mr. Felman.
Hello again. This agenda item came to me from the Texas Rail Advocates, which is a not-for-profit group. They are seeking Texas municipalities to support rail funding in this upcoming Texas legislative session so that Tech Dot can compete for federal rail funding programs for both freight and passenger rail. That's what this resolution of support is for.
Counsel, any discussion? I'll make the motion, if I want to meet with them. For approval of this item 11, I have a motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all forget that I can make a motion.
You some, get out there fast enough, we don't forget.
Well, I'm still not as fast as quick draw, we're here for Mr. German here.
That's your adjourned.
Item 12, to review and approve the city's investment policy and the approved broker and dealers and financial institution list. Larry G. Frye, Jay Frye, G. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you today is the City of Odessa and the Odessa Development Corporation's investment policy, which would be effective October 1, 2022. This policy is required under the Public Funds Investment Act, PFIA, and is prepared in accordance with the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOWA, recommended practices, and is required to be updated on an annual basis. There are very few changes to the policy for this year compared to last year's policy, namely, of course, that the year changed and one grammatical change. Let me outline four different points of emphasis that the, the policy addresses. Number one, the policy includes all financial assets of the city and the ODC, except for the Fireman's Relief and Retirement Trust Fund. Two, the policy identifies the objectives of the investment policy as well as allowable investments, and outlines the reporting requirements. Three, the policy identifies the investment officers, namely, the Assistant City Manager of Administrative Services and the Director of Finance. And four, the policy lists the four approved brokers, dealers, which are the same as we had last year, although one broker, FHN, has changed their representative for the city. With that, Mr. Mayor, be happy to address any questions that the council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Any direction? Any last further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of item, item 12?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Willis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Sprawls. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I'd have a lot of questions, but we'd be here on that. We're going to move on to item 13, adopt the City of Odessa fiscal year 2022, '23 annual budget. Ms. Munson. We just need to put you on here for a whole page.
Yeah, all in one. This agenda item, council, is to adopt the City of Odessa budget for '22, '23. A summary of the budget was attached to this agenda item. We are required by Section 102.006 and 102.007 of the local government code to have a public hearing, and that was held on August 23rd, 2022, prior to any adoption of the budget. Let me just give a little synopsis of the budget. The total proposed revenues are $252,989,524, and the proposed expenditures are slightly higher at $255,27102. And for the benefit of our audience, I will let you know that a lot of that comes from the Equipment Service Fund, where we are doing replacements of equipment. So this year's equipment list to replace is higher than the revenue coming in, which is not an issue, but it looks funny to some people, so I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware of that. The budget was filed with the city secretary's office in accordance with our guidelines on August 8th. Again, the budget hearing was on 8/23/22. We had no questions and no comments from the audience. Sales tax in this budget is projected at $44 million. This is a almost 17% increase over last year's budgeted sales tax. As our current year collections, and you'll probably got the final report last week, we met our goal short. We were over $188,000. That's a pretty good estimate that we had. The budget includes a full year's budget for the 4% cost of living increase that was given in April of '22 to all full-time employees. We are currently undergoing the comprehensive compensation study. General fund revenues were projected at $109,927,550, of which property tax is 33.71% of this amount, and sales tax is 40.03% of this amount. And our total expenditures are just under revenues at $109,174,118, of which our fire department totals 27.95%, and our police department totals 30.58%. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Any discussion? Any comments? Entertain a motion for approval on item 10? Oh, uh...
13.
13, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item 14, consider approval of the Odessa Development Corporation budget for fiscal year 2022, '23. Ms. Munson.
Okay. So this agenda item is to approve the budget of the Odessa Development Corporation. They're required to adopt a budget of expected revenues, proposed expenditures for the next fiscal year, and should seek approval by the city council of that budget. They adopted their budget at the September 8th, 9th meeting last Thursday. And so it will be, it won't be approved until it's also adopted by the city council. Total revenues for the Odessa Development Corp. are $11,580,000, total operating expenses of $2,425,097. We have business incentive and infrastructure costs budgeted at $58,275. Because we have a large fund balance, we budget the whole amount into the business incentives in case there's any large projects that come through, and it pays out all of the grants on the annual basis as they are required to be paid out. And I'll be answering any questions.
Counsel, questions?
I just have one. So on the expenditures, where it says the audit and compliance services, how come it went from $40,000 to $60,000?
Well, be, as we've added some additional grants, we have additional compliance reports that are done by the accounting firm of Weaver, and so those costs have risen, and so that's the reason for the big increase. We do have, we have taken that, those services out for RFP, and the board is currently studying those RFPs, so we may get something cheaper, we don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the review of the...
For the compliance review. This is where they have to meet their investment quota per their economic development agreement. They have to meet payroll, FTEs, and dollar amounts of payroll. They have to provide insurance, and so all of those qualifications have to be met each year before we make payment to them.
Counsel, any questions? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Entertain a motion? So moved. I have a motion by Councilmember Sprouse for approvals, uh, second by Councilmember White, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Muncy.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, consider adopting new rate review mechanism with Atmos Energy.
Good evening, uh, counsel, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item is to consider a rate revenue increase for Atmos Energy. On April first of this year, Atmos Energy filed a rate increase with, uh, the West Texas City served as well as the Texas Railroad Commission. The City of Odessa is a member of a steering committee of seventy cities that reviewed the filing. The original filing was for an increase of eight point seven-seven million, uh, to all of the served cities. Through the, uh, steering committee and the attorney that is assigned to the steering committee, there was a reduction of the, uh, of the proposal to six point seven-two million, and as a, uh, recommendation from the steering committee and the attorney that is assigned to this, um, to this rate increase, it is recommended that this, uh, be approved. Uh, council, uh, can approve this up until October first, and if they choose not to approve it, then it would have to require action from the, uh, Public Utility Commission to review the, uh, the filing. Uh, as proposed, uh, this increase would be a six point two-one percent increase to residential customers and a five point, uh, one-one percent increase to commercial customers, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, discussion? Anybody wanna test the Public Utility Commission? Just for the record, this is a request by Atmos to do the increasing, so any complaints about their increasing when winter comes in about your gas, though if you're on gas, we can be directed to the, uh, young lady is the second last row in the back to my right with her hand up. We do have a personal number, so that will be forwarded to the City Secretary's Office. Counsel, any discussion? I have, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Willis. Do I have a second? Second, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, all against indicated by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Oh, you still have the next one.
Yes, sir.
Item sixteen, review and approve the public improvement district policies and guidelines.
Philip? Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to consider a, uh, policy, uh, and guidelines for, uh, future, uh, public improvement district or PIDS for, uh, residential development. Uh, we did discuss this with the council in July and of, uh, of course, at the last work session. This was something that was initiated by, uh, Beedenbow Homes as the annexation that was discussed. Uh, earlier, they are interested in, uh, utilizing a, uh, PIT process to expand park property in that development, and just as a reminder to, to council, this is a voluntary process that, uh, developers, uh, can take part in, and we did, uh, visit with the City of Lubbock and, uh, looked at the policy that they provide for the, the PIDS, and, uh, we, uh, put some of our, our language in it, including, uh, again, that this would be voluntary, that the, um, uh, land would be city-owned and that the city would also improve any of the improvements that take place on this property, and we did work closely with the, uh, City Attorney's Office, and we thank them for helping, uh, to get this approved into, to council. And so, uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, and just as a reminder to council, any actual PID that will come to, uh, to the council will still have to be approved. This does not give, uh, blanket approval of PIDS. Everything must still be approved by the, by the council upon petition.
We have last, uh, we have control.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any discussion on, uh, item, uh, that was presented by, uh, City, uh, Assistant City Manager?
No.
Any questions to Beedenbow? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember White, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay.
Not yet.
Motion passes unanimously. Philip? This is the last presentation you're doing to this city council.
Yes, sir.
And so, uh, as much as I hate to, uh, pop up a Texas Tech fan, I wanna be able to personally thank you for the, uh, job well done that you've done for, uh, the staff as long as you've done. You've worked diligently, you have, uh, moved up for the ranks. You will be missed. The city in which you're going to are blessed to be able to have you. I wanna personally thank you for seeing you in action when we wind up having the water break and every other biblical event that this city has gone through. You have definitely earned your stripes. You're a great family man, a man of God, and I just wanna be able to say thank you very much for everything you've done for this city and the citizens. You're an unsung hero and nobody sees you, sees that, but we wanna be able to recognize that to you today. I wanna open it up for, uh, council and everyone in the boroughs, if you wish to be able to say a personal goodbye to, uh, Ms. Urid.
It's my pleasure, Philip, to, uh, be able to say, uh, words, um, on your behalf. You've been an amazing assistant, city manager, and, um, the help that you've provided to me, um, is invaluable. When I first came on as a city council person, um, as most do, there, I was a little wet behind the ears, and, you know, some of my questions may have seemed a little crazy, but you never made them seem crazy. You were always willing to go as far as I needed for explanations, provide additional information, you know, just what you were always, Johnny on the spot with everything that was needed, and you gave information that I could trust, and that would turn out to be absolutely like it was, and so I appreciate your integrity. I appreciate, um, your, your humor, you know? Oftentimes I would catch you in that smile, and, uh, these jobs are hard, you know, the decisions are hard, but when you smile and you laugh, you know, it just kinda lightened the load, especially out with the water breaks, you know? We kinda run into each other, you'd have that smile, and that would kinda assure me along with the others, but, you know, since we're telling you goodbye, I'll say it to you, but it gave the assurance that we're gonna get through this, we're gonna be okay, and I, and I just felt very comfortable with that. Thank you very much. Thank you to your wife. ECISD is also losing a very valuable part of our community, and she did a great job out there, I'm hearing, and so congratulations to your wife, to your daughter. I pray that you guys have an absolutely amazing move and that God just blesses your socks off. Thank you very much.
When I follow that one up.
Yeah.
Ditto.
Ditto. Ditto.
I wore my shirt for you today.
Yeah, all right.
I knew that it would be your last time to address us, and, uh, I, I have reminded Philip that it's a long way from Garland to Lubbock, but, uh, didn't seem to affect him. You know, he's much closer now, but that didn't seem to affect his decision. But anyway, you've done a good job. Um, even before you stepped into the role of Assistant City Manager, you did a great job for the city, and, uh, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you, sir. I'm almost in that ditto category. You know, I feel sorry for y'all. What do you have to say? Yeah, I'm glad you're gone. But thank you so much, and everything that they've said, you know, is truly from the heart, and I think, um, I can say I will miss you, um, my friend, and I wish you the best to your wife and your daughter, and knock 'em dead.
Philip, I have nothing but utmost respect for you. I appreciate all the work that you've done for me. Every time I had a situation, uh, somebody reach out to me with the problem going on, I would email you or call you, and you were Johnny on the spot, you always got on it real quick for me, and, uh, so I, as the mayor said, you are an unsung hero. You know, a lot of stuff that was on was because of you, and we appreciate that, and our loss is definitely their gain. I just wish you the best of luck in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. Yeah, I would like to personally thank you, Philip, and wish you and your family blessings, and they're getting a, a true jewel. I feel like the rest of these guys, every time I needed something, whether it be text, phone call, or email, you were Johnny on the spot. You were very helpful. If you didn't know the answer, you got it pretty quickly, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and I wish you and your wife and your little one good luck, and keep in touch, don't be a stranger.
Yes, ma'am.
Philip, we're gonna give you the floor. If you'd like to, uh, any parting words or shots?
Yes, sir. Well, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and the council...
You've got three minutes.
Three minutes. All right, put the timer on. Well, Mr. Mayor and, and, uh, the council and then the past councils that have been up here, they've been, um, uh, nothing but, uh, uh, support and, and help, and, uh, you know, you, you talk about some of the things that we... Oh, I'm not... You, you talk about some of the things that have, have happened, you know, we've had the, the, the water issue, we've had COVID, uh, the winter storm, and, you know, um, I, I hate to say, but I, I, I kinda took a, a, a front role to that mostly because I was on the cameras for that, and, uh, but it's really a, a, a city staff that, uh, that stepped up and, and did that, and I don't think without the staff that's here that we would've been able to accomplish a lot of the stuff, and I would've been able to accomplish a lot of the things that, uh, we've done here. But I think, uh, a, at the end, I really wanna thank Mr. Morro, Cindy and Randy, I think that's really our team that, uh, that we've, we've leaned on, uh, whether it's been, um, work, whether it's been personal issues that we have, I think we've, we spend more time with these folks than we, we do our own family sometimes, and we've gotta